All right, we're going to get started with the agenda portion of the meeting. All right, first we have resolutions. Resolution one, resolution to read 2017 City Market Budget by Title, then public hearing. Two, resolution to adopt the City Market Budget. Then we have ordinances on second reading. One, an order to amend and supplement revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title V, Business and Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5, dash 112, Records. Number two, an order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 13, Public Services, Chapter 13, dash 08, Sewer Service Schedule System, Chapter 13, dash 13, dash 08, 340 Schedule, Schedule of Charges, Sewer Rates. Three, an order to amend and supplement revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, dash 20, Handicap Parking, Section 10, dash 20, dash 010, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, at Curtis Place and Comstock Street. Four, an order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and, Chapter 10, Stopping and Standing or Parking, Section 10, dash 16, Schedule 29, Time Limit Parking, and Chapter 10, dash 12, Traffic Control and Regulations, Section 10, dash 12, dash 060, and 10, dash 12, dash 07, Schedule 8, AV Loading Zone, reference to Liberty Street. Five, an order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Chapter, uh, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, dash 16, Stopping and Standing or Parking, Section 10, dash 16, 020, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, reference to Sedan Street. Six, an order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, dash 16, Stopping and Standing or Parking, Section 10, dash 16, 020, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, reference to Patterson Street. Seven, an order to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, uh, 10, dash 16, Stopping and Standing or Parking, Section 10, dash 16, 020, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, under all railroad elevations, Byers Street, Andy Street, Patterson Street, Sedan Street, and Townsend Street. And we have orders for discussion, orders for perjury. Uh, number one, orders of the city of New Brunswick and the county of New Jersey, approving the application for long-term tax exemptions, authorizing the city of New Brunswick to enter into an authori-- authorizing the city of New Brunswick to enter into a financial agreement with 78 Eastern Avenue Urban Renewal LLC in granting tax exemption. Then we have resolutions. One, approve agenda amendments. Two, approve payroll. Three, authorize refund, refund tax sales to everybody. Four, approve resolution congratulating New Jersey State Federation of Women's Clubs of the General Federation of Women's Clubs, NJSFWC, on the celebration of 100th anniversary of the founding of Douglas College at Rutgers University. Five, approve Chapter 159 budget insertion, State of New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety, for fiscal year, uh, 2018, Business and Safety Grant, PSF 18, dash 01, dash 13, the amount of $21,900. Six, resolution certifying a review of the 2018, 2016 Annual Audit. Seven, authorized direct action plan, reference to 2016 Audit. Eight, approve, uh, approve amendment of resolution R dash 021, 791, reason, uh, the amount of $1,200, Special Graphics LLC, for furnished and delivered work uniforms, for public work specification, 577, dash 16P, not to exceed $1,200. Approve of this change order will not constitute an increase of 20% or more of the amount of the original contract. Nine, uh, request for use of city property, Rutgers University Landscape Architect Club, location, two parking spots across from the seminary, by crosswalk on seminary place for annual parking day, to create a public space parkland, uh, place to read, rest, and socialize. Date, Friday, September 15, 2017, time, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Ten, approve amendment of resolution, R dash 071, 708, reason to pay additional legal fees, the amount of $5,525, at Christopher D. Adams Esquire and Adams Buchanan and Palo LLC, for representation of Thomas Loughlin, uh, Third, and Third, City Administrator in matter of Arthur Anderson et al. versus the city of New Brunswick, on punitive damage claims from $26,000, 04, $26,000, 047, to $31,565, and 47 cents. Eleven, approve PY 2017, 2018 Consolidated Action Plan for CDVG and Home Funding, CDVG PY 2017 Allocation, uh, $781,021, uh, home PY 2017 Allocation to $364,055. Twelve, approve award, award of con, approve award contract, with DGL Rapid Police Incorporated doing business as Maple Collision Repair and Auto Decal, for front door automotive repairs for the police department, term 12 months commencing August 6, 2017, and ending August 5, 2018, specification number 60617P, not to exceed $30,000. Thirteen, approve request for city property, request about warriors, quidditch, location, Jubilee Park, One Soccer Field, Field Number Two, for Bruceum Tucson Summer Fantasy, 2017 Event, Saturday, August 19, 2017, time 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Fourteen, approve payment for emergency procurement, uh, construction department for asbestos identification in free-laid structures on Welford Street, with accredited environmental technologies, not to exceed $4,800, purchase order number D 98297. Fifteen, approve request, uh, approve request for use of city property requested by a women's work organization, located, location Jubilee Park Mansion Lawn Area, for back-to-school obstacle course for the children of New Brunswick, Saturday, August 26, 2017, time, uh, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Sixteen, approve payment for emergency procurement of board utility, removal of organic compound from activated parking system, with Cavit Nord Americas Incorporated, not to exceed $43,712, purchase orders number D 97892, D 99047, D 99048, D 99049. Seventeen, approve amendment for resolution, pay additional legal fees, the amount of $17,875, to our Leo and Donnie Group, for representation of Mayor James K. Hill and the mayor of Stephen, Madam Stephen Middleton, uh, versus the city of New Brunswick et al. and Arthur Anderson versus the city of New Brunswick, on punitive damage claim, from $209,750 to $227,550. Eighteen, approve amendment of resolution, reason to add Investors Bank, designation of bank depositors and cash management plan, 2017. Nineteen, approve amendment, resolution 071640, reason for one-year contract extension with wireless electronics incorporated, doing business as wireless communications electronics, for radio maintenance for the fire department, 12-month period commencing August 6, 2017, and ended August 5, 2018, specification number 44715P, not to exceed $10,500. Twenty, approve AC liquor license renewal, 2017, 2018. Twenty-one, uh, advice and consent of reappointment of municipal court judge in the city of New Brunswick, James P. Hobage, expires on August 31, 2020, three-year term. Twenty-two, uh, approve relaxation of noise orders, request by Michael Breach and Incorporated, reason to perform traffic line strip for striking and lane delineation along College Avenue from Huntington Street to Hamilton Street, date, Monday, Friday, July 20, 2017, to Thursday, August 3, 2017, time 7:00 PM to 3:00 AM, non-pro-tongue. Twenty-three, approve amendment of resolution, change order number one, Traffic Lines Incorporated, for 2016 Traffic Line Striking, specification number 904, dash 16, the amount of $273.70. Approve of this change will not constitute an increase of 20% of the amount of the original contract. Twenty-four, approve request for street closing, requested by Rutgers University Office of Emergency Management, uh, Rutgers University Movement Days, honest college students, Thursday, August 31, 2017, location, one-way seminary place from College Avenue to George Street, time 6:00 AM to 4:00 PM, for Rutgers University Movement Days, College Avenue, students, uh, date, Saturday, August, September 2, 2017, one-way on College Avenue between Huntington Street and Bishop Place, heading south on College Avenue towards Hamilton Street, 6:00 AM to 3:00 PM, least extra duty. Approve, uh, twenty-five, approve award contract with DeSantis Construction Incorporated for Rutgers Village Area Asphalt and Curbs, Phase Two, specification number 910, dash 17, not to exceed $583,079.6. Twenty-six, approve relaxation of city noise orders, request by Gilbey Building and Corp, Building Company, reason for crane at the clinical academic building, 125 Patterson Street, to complete, uh, complete a material hoist, hoisting operation, Saturday, date, Saturday, July 29, 2017, alternate date, Saturday, July, Saturday, August 5, 2017,[598.23]
Read the city market by that.
Second.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Now, now we open up to a public hearing. Anybody from the public like to speak on it? Please give your name and address and remind you that you have five minutes.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Charles Cradville. I'm the editor of the committee newspaper, the down in Brunswick today. And I'm from New Brunswick. I'm asking about the proposed rate tiers. Obviously, a lot has changed because of the revaluation, so they're redoing the rates. I wanted to ask, I guess, why the highest rate under the old system was Class A? And now it's kind of switched spots with Class B. Can you tell me why the rate effectively is going up for Class B and going down for Class A?
Yes.
What we did was we went to a third party. Bender. To discuss the budget, the changes that have taken place. And what we did was we backed out the total dollars. So that what the properties would be paying in the current year would be almost equal to what they paid last year.
I can see the figures are right on par for Class C and Class D, but it looks like they're, or well, and Class B as well, but it looks like there's going to be significant, significantly more money raised for Class A this year than...
That's because there's new properties.
Oh.
There's new properties and redevelopment. That's added to it.
Thank you very much. Can you tell me, is the parking authority chipping in yet for the land that they own? In the, didn't in this, in this area?
No, that's not the property.
Okay. Okay, I, I, I think they should step up and pay. I know they're a government entity, but they do meet the criteria to step forth. For these, you know, so-called, I guess, Class B tax paid properties they own. So, I think they should pay. I think they, it would, it would help this city market to be able to do more. So, that's all I have to say.
Anybody else in the public?
Motion to close the hearing. We have a motion to adopt the budget.
Motion to close the hearing.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes.
Resolution R-081700B, which is a resolution to adopt the city market budget.
Make a resolution to adopt the city market budget?
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. All right. Now, move on. Orders on second reading. All right. Orders on second reading. An ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ones of the city of New Brunswick, Title V, Business and Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5, Dash 112, on reference to records. Anybody from the public like to speak on this ordinance?
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick. Can somebody on the council tell me what is changing, what the purpose of this ordinance is?
Well, I, I could tell you that this ordinance is a total revamp of the old ordinance. Practically fifteen, eighteen years since council has revised the rates, et cetera. The ordinance is a, like I said, a total rewrite. Fees have gone up, some of the procedure with respect to the towing has been updated with respect to some of the towing features that were now that weren't contemplated, I guess, at the time, the original ordinance was from city attorney, Mr. Katniss, who I worked on together. If there's specific questions, he might be able to answer as well. I, it is a total rewrite, Mr. Cradville.
Okay, thank you. So, these fees that are going up, are these fees that are paid by the company, the records company, or are these fees that are going to be paid by, you know?
Fees that are paid by the owners of the vehicles that are towed.
And how severe are the increases?
With respect to that question, you say how severe? I don't know if I have a percentage with respect to the increases. I believe it was sixty-five, one seventy-five in some cases. Mr. Katniss has any more specific with respect to that? I know it's still lower than, I believe, what North Brunswick charges for the civil service.
I, I don't have the percentages in front of me. I, if I recall correctly, the fees that are in place now went into effect sometime in two thousand and four, just two thousand and seven, in that range. I had at one time figured out each year if we increased, what it would come out to. It's not severe. If you extrapolate the increase over the many years since an increase was approved by the council, it's actually probably less than the annual increase in gross national product or whatever. It's, it's not, it's not severe in my mind. And it is, as city attorney Chairman said, less than North Brunswick. I use North Brunswick as a guide. I did refer to Highland Park, Franklin, South Brunswick as well, the surrounding communities. I will note that most, some of those communities have built into their ordinances a ten percent increase per year. We did not do that. I think the feelings were that council should review it periodically and decide when it should be increased instead of approving a ten percent per year increase. Just by example, North Brunswick was a hundred and fifteen dollars for a light duty tow in two thousand and fourteen. In two thousand and fifteen, it was scheduled to go up every January first, starting in two thousand and fifteen by ten percent. That would be eleven dollars and fifty cents if my math is correct. Which would put it up to a hundred and twenty-five and change, which is a little bit more than we are now, and that was two thousand and fifteen. So, we had ten percent for two more years and you could figure out where they're at now. Franklin Township is in the process, I believe, of increasing the rates. Highland Park's rates are scheduled to increase two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, which would put them on par of what our rates will be if we approve this ordinance.
Thank you for the answer. I, I don't necessarily think, I'm glad that the, the city's not trying to build in an annual increase. But I don't think it's fair to just say, well, it's been, you know, seventeen years since the last increase, so let's really jack it up a lot. It hasn't been said exactly how big of the increase it is. Is there anybody in the room who can tell me what the rates are presently today versus this?
I asked a big guy to turn off.
He knows them, chapter verse, I'm sure. Different vehicle classifications.
The parking guarantee motors from Brunswick. Some background of this. The ordinance was enacted originally in nineteen sixty-one. At that time, an automobile tow was five dollars. In two thousand and seventeen, an automobile tow was seventy-five dollars, between eight AM and six PM. Six PM to eight AM, it's eighty-five dollars. So, my point saying that is, what could you buy for, for five dollars back in sixty-one that's only seventy-five dollars today? Do your homework, see if you can figure one of those out. I haven't yet found anything of equal quality from sixty-one to two thousand and seventeen. That said, if I can steal your sugar, I want to thank the council, police department, the city attorney's office for revamping this ordinance, because it's been, from sixty-one, it's been fixed here and there, never really thoroughly revamped as they've done this time. Thank you for that. And all through all that time, the towing companies have served the city, whether it's events for criminal matters or snow, whatever it is, it goes in every city, you don't have to. So, regardless of the fees, we've done our job. I also have, if anybody needs to see them, I have various numbers of cost increases for our operations available. And just so you know, the city attorney's office is aware of this. These discussions began in May of two thousand and fourteen, okay? So, it's not been just overnight decision. So, it took us three years to get to where we are. So, I just want to say thank you again. And if there's any other questions, I'll be here. Does the council have any questions for me? My company's been doing this for over ninety years, New Brunswick, so we're still doing it. Thank you.
Thanks. Can you tell me how many record services are currently used by six licenses? Okay. And I see here the final part of section one.
There are eight licenses.
Eight what?
Six.
I see. Thank you. Appreciate that. The last part of section one here says dispatching fee of twenty thousand dollars to be divided by the licensed services paid in monthly installments. Is this new, or how does this compare to the previous system?
This, this has been in place for several years. I can't quote, in fact, we have a hundred years. Unfortunately, it wasn't codified in the ordinance itself. It was administrative codification, we will. We decided to actually codify it as new ordinance. And this particular fees is what, I guess, the phrase, caused the police department to have this rotating list that's utilized when records are called by police dispatch.
So, it was on a rotating list before?
It was.
It was, okay.
Chairman? I can... I just, it's been since two thousand and five, it's been in place. I was the police director at the time when it was implemented. We were having a problem with the answering service that was in place at the time. It was agreed upon by the city, the police department and the record services that police dispatch would take over the duties of calling out the records. And that's when it was implemented. I, I think it's just the codification of, of a, a procedure or policy that's been in place for twelve years now.
Okay. I'm just curious about the twenty thousand dollars. How does that compare to what, what's been deducted in the past?
That's what they currently pay, dividing equally among the licenses. I don't think Katniss, that was the figure that was alive that relative to the city's cost, only for making any money, so to speak.
I don't think it was intended to make any money. Maybe Mr. Lottman could have some recollection of it, because it has been a lot. But I don't think the intention was for the city to make any money. It was just to cover costs. I think of a computer, was there a computer? I think there's some software. Software, some, some, it might be some software to aid in the dispatch.
Okay. Guess that's all we have. Thank you very much.
Anybody else in the public? Any none? Will be ordered.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. And we have an ordinance, uh, two. An ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title thirteen, Public Services, Chapter thirteen, Dash oh one, Sewer Services, Section thirteen, Dash zero eight, uh, three, four, zero, Schedule, uh, A Schedule of Charges, Sewer Rates. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this particular ordinance? Please step forward to microphone. Remind you that you have five minutes.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick. I just want to understand for the record exactly which item it is on this ordinance that is being modified?
All of the rates for the second half of, I shouldn't say the second half, for the remainder of twenty seventeen as of August third tomorrow, assuming you act on this tonight. And then, there's a rate increase proposed for eighteen, nineteen, twenty for the various subsections here. The quarterly rate that our residential and commercial customers pay. And then, the industrial rates are broken out into some subsections, the flow, the VOP, and the suspended softens.
Okay, so it's all four of those first quarters?
All four of those categories are being adjusted by five percent for the remainder of twenty seventeen, five percent in eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. And the rationale for doing so is we projected, we, the MCUA treatment costs to continue to rise, we projected them to rise by five percent for the next three years. And then, in addition to that, I've mentioned this a few times, we're now adding carbon to the treatment process to deal with the, the issue of hydralate in the, the NR canal. That carbon grabs, the product being used to retard the growth of hydralate, it grabs it, it sinks at the bottom of the detention basin. When we clean the detention basins out, that stuff gets washed down the sanitary sewer line to the MCUA, they're going to bill us for that.
Thank you. And I, I understand the reason the de-ordinance has to come back is because there was a mathematical error made, and we all make mistakes. Mr. Lottman, you know, owned up to this one and made some changes, and there was another error that needed to be changed. And, and I, I don't, I don't mean this in a bad way, but I want to ask, how, who reviews ordinances before they become law? Is it just Mr. Lottman, or are there other folks that, that review these ordinances?
Well, the body, the main body, I don't know if Mr. Chairman wants to speak, but the main body of the ordinance or resolution is prepared by the law department. I was the one who calculated the rates, and I was using an obsolete ordinance when I was calculating the increases. That was clearly my mistake. The second mistake was a publishing matter, and that's why you couldn't act on it two weeks ago. But, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
But you also caught it.
I'm sorry?
But you also caught it.
The publishing error?
Mistake.
The mathematical? I caught my math error too late. You had already acted on the ordinance, and I clearly had to start the process all over again. Again, that was my error, not the law department's error.
Okay. And the publishing error, whose error was that?
It was a, my recollection, it was some mistake made between the clerk's office and the home news in terms of publication of the date that second reading would occur. I think there was an issue where the entire ordinance couldn't fit in the, the box that the home news was going to allow for, but...
Thank you. I, I don't mean to belabor the point, I just, I just want to know who actually is involved in reviewing the ordinances. And, you know, I, I think that, at the very least, the council must review them. I hope that you're reviewing them. And I want to raise this concern that, yes, the MCUA has raised its rates, and that's causing the city to raise its rates. But I'd like to look at an alternative explanation for why the MCUA is raising its rates. I'm not sure if you guys followed a particular lawsuit that I'm about to tell you about, but it was a lawsuit brought against the MCUA by a company called Spectre Serve, a New Jersey-based company, and was one of their contractors on a project. And you may, you may have heard that, you know, about a year ago, they, they settled the case for five million dollars, which is a really big settlement. But even bigger was the seven point five million dollars paid to the Woodlands Law Firm to represent the MCUA in this case that they settled before the trial was even over. And another sixty-four thousand to my friends at Boris, Golden Foley, Beniolo, Hyman and Stahl. And so, we're looking at a total of more than twelve and a half million dollars just in that one lawsuit. So, I think, given that every rate payer in New Brunswick is affected by the rate increase that the MCUA is passing on to us, I think that the council and everyone in the administration, if you're not all right, should familiarize yourself with that case, because the allegations in that case are really serious. These allegations of fraud and self-dealing, and even though they, the trial never finished because it was settled for five million dollars in repayer funds, there's a lot of juicy stuff in there that I think that the public should know about. And so, to, to, to help spread knowledge about that, I'm working on an article about it. And I would like a comment from the, the city council, if you have anything you'd like to say about that case, the lawsuit that Spectre Serve brought against the MCUA, and how it impacts the rates.
Sorry that affects the rates, but it's a due process to go through.
Okay, you're familiar with the case?
Yeah.
You are? Okay. Do, do you think there was some merit to the allegations? They were pretty serious. But, but the judges won't decide, because they, they paid five million dollars to settle it, so...
That's what a lot of people do, they settle things, you know, before they go to court.
Well...
You could try that.
I, I guess I could, but then I wouldn't get, get my day in court. And I certainly wouldn't spend seven million bucks on lawyers and then settle the case. That would be a, that would really kind of defeat the purpose of spending all that money on the lawyers. So, I think it was wasteful spending. I think you get my point. It went to a very politically connected firm, the Woodlands firm. And as a result, the twelve million dollar hole in the budget for this county organization that we're a part of. And I think that, you know, there are other legitimate reasons that they might have to raise their rates, but this is certainly contributing, it's a contributing factor. And so, I appreciate you hearing me out, but I think we need to keep an eye on the MCUA, because what happened there was a very costly problem for everybody and needs to be prevented in the future. So, thank you.
Anybody else in the public like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none? Will be ordered.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Number three, an ordinance to amend and supplement, amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title ten, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten, Dash twenty, Handicap Parking, Section ten, Dash twenty, Dash zero, ten, Schedule thirty-nine Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, A thirteen Curtis Place, and one oh five sixteen. And one oh two Comstock Street. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none? Will be ordered.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Number four, an ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title ten, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten, Dash sixteen, Stopping and Standing or Parking, Section ten, Dash sixteen, Schedule twenty-nine, Time limit parking, Chapter ten, Dash twelve, Traffic Control Regulations, Section ten, Dash twelve, Dash zero, six, zero, and ten, Dash twelve, zero, seven, zero, Schedule eight, Eight B, Loading Zones, Reference to Liberty Street. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this ordinance?
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick. Want to ask about this ordinance. Normally, I'd ask Mr. Egan, because he's the liaison to the parking authority, but since he's not here, can any other member of the council tell me what this ordinance does?
Yes.
Hope a member of the council could tell me.
Well, we're going to get the question answered.
Okay. What thought you could know what it does?
Uh, Council President, specific to the ongoing demolition of the cultural center, in front of the cultural center, there was a loading zone that was there to facilitate the surrounding businesses with the demolition project and the logistics of the site that eliminates that loading zone temporarily. So, to request the parking authority, we initiated to create the loading zone at the top of Liberty Street and eliminate two parking spaces.
Okay, so we're eliminating two parking spaces, but, okay, so two parking spaces add to the loadings. What about the parking on the other side of the street? Is that already taken away, or is that going to be taken away?
Specific to what other side of which street?
Liberty.
There is no parking on the north side of Liberty Street left.
It used to be metered.
That'll be restored once the county project is completed.
It's completely correct.
Further down the street, that's correct.
Thank you. I'm just concerned, because it did, you know, you're, you're making changes to, to the parking situation, it didn't seem like you understood what this ordinance was going to do.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said it seemed like you didn't understand what this was going to do.
Why?
Because I asked if anybody on the council could tell me what the ordinance does.
But we, I mean, we don't, like, we already, we discussed it before, we already know for that, but you said we don't understand it. We want to get something specifically, we, we don't, I'm not going to sit here and say, okay, this street, this is what's getting eliminated, when we have somebody with bad expertise. So, the way that you described that, it's not that we don't understand it, we want to have a thorough answer to it.
Okay. Will you defer the question to someone else? I ask the...
Somebody else, but you said we don't understand it, that's not, that's not correct.
Well, I just said you, I mean, you know, I, I don't think that this ordinance was reviewed. And it, you know, this is why I'm asking questions about who reviews the ordinances.
Okay.
And so, you know, I'm just, I wanted to know what the purpose was of this.
Okay.
Now, I know, because Mr. Valenti had the answer.
Exactly.
I think if the next one continues this discussion, I'll shut up for now. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public? Seeing none? Will be ordered.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Number five, ordinance to amend and supplement revised general ordinance of the city of New Brunswick, Title ten, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter ten, Dash sixteen, Stopping and Standing or Step Parking, Section ten, Dash sixteen, zero, two, zero, Schedule twenty-four, No Parking at Any Time, Reference to the Sedam Street. Somebody from the public like to...
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick. I'll explain why I'm a little more bent out of shape than usual. At the last meeting, I witnessed you sign this ordinance on first reading. Here, your signature's on it. And, you know, I went up to you after the meeting very politely, just to ask, can you tell me what this ordinance does? Because, not to, not to test you or to, because I live on Sedam Street, and I think it might affect the parking on Sedam Street.
Well, where do you know, I didn't know you lived on Sedam Street, because you used to say New Brunswick today. I didn't know that was an address.
I went up, I live on Sedam Street, and I'm proud of it. And I wanted to ask you after the meeting, hey, what, what are you doing in Sedam Street here? And you remember what it told me?
And I said, we don't discuss it on first reading.
Right.
Which we don't.
Now, for what reason don't you discuss ordinances on first reading? Are you bound by some law or policy that says you are not allowed to talk about ordinances even if you just signed your name to them? Or is it because you have a built-in obstructionist strategy to prevent information from getting out until the day you pass the ordinance? Or is it because you didn't read and you didn't know what you signed?
Mr. President, I'm not going to discuss with you whether or not we review something, because I'm not even going to dignify it with a response, saying that you think that we don't discuss something, or you say specifically, I don't read something. I'm an intelligent human being who reads everything that comes in front of me. So, for you to say something like that is an insult, but I don't take it personally coming from the source.
Fair enough. Uh, can, can you tell me, in that case, what part of Sedam Street you are taking away the parking from?
In front of the treatment center, and that's why we, because people would double parking in front of there. And if you want to have more of an expert opinion, I'll toss it over here.
Okay.
Mr. Council President, it's requested the mayor's office through numerous complaints. There was an issue with public parking, improperly parked cars in front of the treatment centers, specifically from the railroad elevation to railroad avenue, which is the one unique spot on railroad avenue where it's not adjacent to the track. Part of the other, the second portion to this is directly south of railroad avenue, there is a small daga, for lack of a better term, and there's a fire hydrant that's set at an awkward distance, so we extended no parking, tend to be past the hydrant, which is stable.
Thank you for the explanation. I just want to say that I think the council can do better, and I think that there's literally no reason to have a policy that you don't speak about ordinances that are on first reading, especially if you've already passed them and signed them. I understand if you say, oh, this part of the meeting's only about resolutions, or this part's only about a certain ordinance, that's one thing. But if that's the public comment portion of me, if somebody asks you about an ordinance, whether it's an ordinance that hasn't even been drafted yet, just an idea in your head, what's the harm in, in answering the question about it? If you've got not, you know, I...
You can say that's a public comment, because we're still on this ordinance, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just elaborating to finish my remarks.
Actually, you, you offer an opinion on how we should answer all the resolutions.
Exactly, exactly. I'm offering an opinion that you shouldn't have this policy of not answering questions about first reading ordinances, because it doesn't benefit any, any, any purpose. And there's no public policy that says you have to do that. You're a public official, you decide what you, and what questions you answer if you don't answer. And I think in the context of a Sedam Street resident coming up to you after the meeting and asking politely what you're...
I always know where I actually live on Sedam Street.
Did I ask politely though?
How?
Did I ask you politely about the ordinance?
Yeah, you came up to me and I said that we're not, we're not going to discuss it on first reading.
Right.
Because you, if you're giving your address, it says New Brunswick today, then we might know where you live on Sedam Street. But I didn't have that on public record. But I didn't have that on public record.
Okay, so, just to be clear, if I told you I live on Sedam Street, you would have answered the question?
Probably not.
Okay, because it's me.
No, because anybody on first reading, we don't discuss it.
So you, so see, I'm telling you, that's a bad policy. Why, what is the reason for the policy?
Okay, if you want to change the policy, you are free to put pressure, run for office, whatever you want to do. But while we're here, we don't discuss. I don't remember ever, even when I was coming to the city council meeting, I don't remember discussing it on first reading.
If, well, I've been sitting up here for a few years, as everybody knows, and it's always been my experience that an ordinance introduced on first reading was discussed, second to you, but the council didn't discuss it when they adopted first reading, or necessarily the public portion. I will say that Mr. Cradville was right in that for the public portion meeting, any member of the public can ask anything they want about any particular ordinance, idea, concept. In the same vein, US public officials have to give Mr. Cradville and others the right to speak publicly. But you don't have to answer any questions. You can decide to answer or not answer. You have to hear him out because it's a public portion meeting. But you don't have to entertain discussion on a pick or topic that you're not prepared to talk about or desire to talk about or enter into a colloquy with any member of the public. The only thing the law requires is that there's a public portion of a meeting and that an individual from the public can get out and speak.
Is that what you mean by that?
That's between you and a member of the public.
Right, so, so it would have been okay for Mr. Fleming to answer my question after the meeting?
If you so desire.
And I would just suggest respectfully that that is the best policy to have. That you'll answer any question you can, and if you sign your name to an ordinance, whether it's first reading or second reading, if somebody asks you a question, no matter who they are, no matter whether they live on Sedam Street or the moon, you'll answer the question.
I would defend it because the member of the public was a reporter.
Okay. Oh, you sound like the president.
No, no, I just don't sound far from you, you actually sound like...
I sound like President Trump?
No.
Okay, what's my number one question I come here with every time?
You can discuss that during...
Okay, I will. I will, I just, the reason I think that that's a good policy to have is because the more folks that are involved in the discussion of ordinances, the better. Ultimately, you end up with a better product if more people are involved. So, anything that keeps quiet what an ordinance will actually do until later in the process limits the number of people that might come out. I mean, I, you know, I think, you know, people might want to come out about certain ordinances, but they don't know about them until it's already passed on second reading. So, a policy of not speaking about ordinances on first reading serves to limit the discussion, limit the number of people that'll come to these meetings, limit the level of input that you're going to get on your ordinances. And I think, and this is something I've learned doing the journalism work that I do, that you get a better product when you have more input. The more people you get involved, the more people who you open your mind to, the more people who you talk to, the more fuller, better product you get. So, I would say that you should probably stop with the, you know, we don't talk about it on first reading rule because there's no basis for it, and it only incurs and limits the public discussion. So I will be asking about your first reading ordinance during the public comment portion. I hope you do the right thing, okay?
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Six, in ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10-16, Stopping and Standing or Parking, Section 10-16-020, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time, Reference to Patterson Street. Anybody from the public would like to discuss this?
Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, can I just get an idea of exactly what spot is going to be changed?
Please, it's the council. During our research to do the, prepare the ordinance for the no parking in the railroad elevations, we discovered there was a conflict in the existing ordinance. The existing ordinance had no parking on Patterson Street from French to George on the south side, which is our side of the street. However, it was promptly codified under time limit parking. There are meters from Elm Road to Patterson, so this is just to correct the conflict that was in the ordinance.
So technically, it's under the metered parking, but it's also no parking under the ordinances, and so there's no parking being removed?
For the one block, that's correct.
Right, thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. We have seven, in ordinance to amend and supplement the revised general ordinance of the City of New Brunswick, Title 10, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10-16, Stopping and Standing or Parking, Section 10-16-020, Schedule 24, No Parking at Any Time under all railroad elevations, Byers Street, Handy Street, Patterson Streets, Sedam Street, and Townsend Streets. Anybody from the public would like to speak on this ordinance?
Good evening once again, Charles Cradville, Sedam Street, New Brunswick, and the City of New Brunswick today. I'd like to ask, you know, this is going to compound the issue with removing parking in front of the treatment center. This is right next to it on Sedam Street. It's an area where parking's already at high demand. What do you have to say to the people who are going to be affected? And what do you, what do you think are some potential solutions or alternatives?
I think it's about, I mean, we're not giving you city, I didn't, we were speaking, I spoke about it before, but I got a ticket in another town in New York. And a lot of towns have that, you can't park in the railroad competition.
It's a state statute.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Valenti informed me of that. And so I understand, but I just, I think this is going to mean that as a practical matter, there are at least four spots under that bridge, maybe six, plus the one or two that you took away with the other ordinance. That's six or eight spots. Where are all the people that are going to this clinic supposed to park? What is going to be the solution? And how are you going to make sure that the residents who live on these blocks are able to park?
Please, the council, I would like to point out that there's a significant homeland security issue as well as we are aware of in the course of normal events, and it was a legitimate accident in Atlanta, tanker burned underneath the I-85 expressway, and that traffic is going to be stalled for two years until they enact repairs. So imagine, God forbid, there was something like that that occurred on the railroad elevation. That is a northeast corridor, which is literally the carriageway for the northeast. So, I understand Mr. Cradville's concerns regarding parking, but I think that the homeland security plus the preservation of physical structure trumps any concerns we may have.
Well, I don't doubt the concern is valid. I, you know, the bridge gets hit by trucks all the time. It's, it's, it's an old railroad bridge. It's there. I understand it's a state statute, you've got to make the city ordinances comply with it, but I, my question still wasn't answered. What are you going to do to make sure that the people go into this clinic? I mean, do you think this clinic is a good thing for New Brunswick?
Of course.
Okay, so, so what are we going to do to make sure people can get there without creating a parking problem for the residents of this clinic?
Yes, I complained about we're putting more parking, parking beds in the area.
I didn't see any on Sedam Street.
Huh?
I don't, I mean...
I mean, like I said, we have to adjust it. It's a homeland, I didn't even open, I didn't even think about that because, like I said, I've been in other towns before. We're not the only one, we're not the only one. I've been, I remember that ticket specifically. And now it's a homeland security issue, and it's a state statute. You know, anything, you say trucks hit the bridge all the time, what if somebody thought of something else, to do something else on that bridge? That would disrupt the entire...
Yeah, I would submit they could probably do that, regardless of whether or not there's a no parking sign next to it.
What's that?
I'm saying, I'm saying if somebody wanted to do something to damage the bridge, they could probably do it even if it was no parking anytime. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so at the end of the day, while, yes, this is one concern, I still haven't had my question answered. What we're going to do to make sure the people going to this clinic have a place to park? And the residents also have a place to park? Because right now, your solution is we're going to take away eight spots, or six spots, and just let the chips fall where they may. Are we going to do anything to make sure that, you know, these folks who go to the clinic aren't taken by surprise on the morning that the signs go up, that the ordinance takes effect? Are you going to do anything to suggest alternative places for these people to park? What, you know, have we really looked at the core issue here? Or are we just, you know, updating an ordinance to comply with a state statute that was passed in the 80s, by the way? So, we're catching up to the 80s now with this ordinance. What are we going to do for the parking problem?
Mr. Valenti, is there something that...
I would take their advice from the parking authority. As much as I try to help them do a bunch of things, I got to defer to them as a face of that. Sorry.
Mr. Cradville, I don't know if it might impact enough of many of the patients that go to the clinic, including those who use medevac transportation, because they don't have their own car. So, I don't know about his percentage. I know stuff, but I know they go up there and do, and they just drop them off. They do whatever they need to be, do with the clinic, and then they will call the transportation to pick them up. So, I don't know if those would be affected, but I don't know. Because I, I, I know how it operates. So, but I, I am not quite sure how it affects, so I'm not saying that that's the, the solution. But just to make, you know, to make you aware, that maybe those patients need to use medevac transportation, to drop them off, and then they bring it back, pick them up when they need it.
Well, I'm sure that's true for many patients. I do see a lot of private cars parked there. But it's a busy place during the day. I think the folks that go there go there daily in many cases. So, here's a constructive suggestion. If you're going to make these changes, you're going to pass this ordinance tonight. At the very least, get in touch with the clinic and let them know what spaces are going to be off limits and starting on what date, so they can tell the patients, so that the patients don't get burned and get a ticket for just trying to go to the clinic. Similarly, there's one block of Sedam Street that's on the other side of the bridge that you might want to tell the residents that, hey, starting on this date, you're not going to be able to park under the bridge anymore. You're not going to be able to park in front of the clinic anymore, so that they're not blindsided. I think that's just common sense. I know you're going to presumably erect a metal sign, you know, in these places to say no parking anytime, but it might help people if they get a little bit of a warning and instead don't get taken by surprise. I think that'd be a constructive, positive thing to do to help ease the transition. And, you know, hopefully, you could also look into alternatives to suggest to people, well, hey, if you can't find parking on Sedam Street, here's an alternative place to park, or here's a public transportation solution that you can take to get here. I think there's definitely room for improvement in both of those areas, and I hope that you'll do that, instead of just passing these ordinances that outlaw parking in certain places. There's more that needs to be done, so, thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. And we have ordinance for, ordinance of one, ordinance for the City of New Brunswick and the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, through the application for long-term tax exemption. Authorizing the City of New Brunswick to enter into a financial agreement with 78 East and Avenue Urban Renewal LLC, granting a tax exemption.
Move the ordinance sitting down August 16th, 5:30 p.m., same date to the average time.
Second. Second. Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig?
Yes.
Council President Fleming?
Yes. Okay, now we have Resolutions 1 through 28. And we've already, yes, 174, we've adopted that one already. Anybody from the public wish to speak on the resolution?
I have a question.
Yes?
I have a question if someone can help me with that 25. Is this the same construction company that did the work in the Edbrook area with the curbs and the pavement? I don't know if it's still a light business.
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
Is this the same company in 25, or 28?
Yeah.
Is this the same company that did our...
No, it's a different contract.
Okay, because I, the curbs out there are a disaster.
We have not paid them fondly yet, but we have...
Oh, okay, I was just, I was curious of this. So, it's a different company, and they'll be monitored maybe better?
I'm sorry.
Will they be monitored better through the city?
Yes, but certainly they, in fact, when the previous contractor had started, they actually removed about 300 feet of curb going around the oreys and anything because it was even worse than it is here now. Clearly, some of the abrasions are after the fact. Not necessarily the best detail, but it does help to journey the area of road. But it's a different contract.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody from the public on the resolutions? You have five minutes.
Good evening once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Six and seven are the audit review. Can I hear about the audit and the corrective action plan, please?
The audit...
I'm sorry?
Oh, no.
Oh, the audit, you've had a chance to review. That's what Resolution 6 speaks to, the personal review of the audit by the council. All of our purchases were reviewed, or samples of our purchases were reviewed, and there were no violations or exceptions found. We are considered a low-risk audited team when it comes to state and federal grants. There were no material weaknesses found, no significant deficiencies found. There were a couple of observations and recommendations made by the auditors. If you'll let me get to them. That the deposits or cash receipts taken in by the planning department, the buildings department as it relates to elevator inspections, and then the recreation department be deposited within 48 hours, that police dispatch service fees that have been collected have a supporting ordinance in place to allow for the collection of those monies. The same holds true for some recreation fees charged by the recreation department, in particular, the leasing of the teen center to outside parties from time to time. And then this is a, this is kind of a repetitive comment about assets that the Free Public Library owns and how they invest in it.
So, does that, does that mean that there's no, no longer an issue with the police tickets summonses?
No, that does not mean that. A separate audit of the court is done by a separate document, and the issue of those outstanding tickets was recognized again by the auditors.
Can I get the figures on how many?
Yes, I'll leave their comments for, an audit done in April 27, excuse me, the April 2017 monthly management report that I guess is prepared by the municipal court was examined. Tickets assigned but not issued, the tickets assigned but not issued report indicated that there were 126 over 180, there were 126 tickets, excuse me, over 181 days old. These tickets should be recalled. The second comment, tickets issued but not assigned report indicated that there were 449 tickets on this report. There should be no tickets listed. The third comment is, follow-up incomplete report indicated that 25 tickets are over three years old. As per Rule 7:8-9F, once a case is over three years old, the tickets must be dismissed. These tickets are generally dismissed the following month by the court.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Are there any other documents up there with other recommendations or?
Those are the only, uh, the only ones I have.
Okay.
I'm told there may be a separate audit of the library, but I'm not familiar with that, if that's the case.
Thank you. Can you just tell me what the dispatch fees are? I, I heard there needs to be an ordinance passed to, to allow that?
Uh, yes. It was, it was adopted last meeting?
The wrecker one?
The wrecker, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, so that's what it, so it's?
I'm sorry.
I understand.
Dispatch, yes.
Uh, and then the leasing of the teen center, to what parties does the, the government lease out the building?
I think they occasionally lease out to groups that want to have a, um, kind of a neighborhood get-together there. I think they've leased out the people who wanna have, uh, birthday parties in, um, maybe the game room. Um, I think they have leased out some, um, nonprofits from time to time. The names of the groups I couldn't tell you tonight, but I could get them through the recreation director if you wanted them.
Okay, thank you. I'll follow up. Um, I am concerned about the issues with the tickets, but I'll get to that when I get to Judge, uh, Hobish. So, uh, seven-ten and seven-seventeen are this, uh, lawsuits against the city by, by, uh, current former police. Um, the mayor's bills are now up to two hundred twenty-seven thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. Can I get an update on the case? Has the trial begun yet? Is there a trial date?
Cases are still pending. I don't, I'm not aware of trial dates.
Okay. Uh, seven-sixteen is the, um, emergency procurement. Can you tell me a little bit about this? Uh, it says removal of organic compound and activated carbon system. What does that mean? Should we be concerned?
This was the leasing of, uh, equipment, uh, from an outfit in Texas that allows us to introduce the carbon, um, in a fine powdered form into the treatment process. We're gonna lease the, the equipment for as long as, um, the water supply authority is putting the, um, a chemical agent in the canal to deal with the hydralate issue.
So, uh, this had been previously being dealt in there, and now you have a machine to make a fire? Or now, if this was necessary to dump?
We, we put this in place, um, weeks ago. I think we announced, uh, the meeting here when we were going to introduce the carbon. We are just simply, um, letting the council know that we retain the services of this cabinet in order by an emergency procurement.
Okay, and can you tell me where they're based out of?
Tex, somewhere in Texas.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and so, yeah, regarding, uh, Judge Hobish, she's being, uh, reappointed tonight. Does the council have any comment on his, uh, tenure so far? So far, so good? Okay. Uh, I've, uh, never, uh, um, don't have too much experience with him, but I, I, uh, he did, uh, offer me the chance to, uh, ask him questions and kind of figure, figure things out at one, you know, impromptu in the courtroom, and I asked him about this issue of the ticket books. And he told me it's squarely a police issue. That was his answer. He said, you know, no answer. He's also refused to have a sit-down meeting with me about it, and, and, you know, has not, um, as far as I know, pursued this any further than the answer he gave me. Um, so, since Judge Hobish believes this is a police issue, um, can you please ask the police to comment on these, uh, was it, uh, four hundred forty-nine tickets that are issued but not assigned, and a hundred twenty-six tickets that are assigned and not issued, over a hundred eighty-one days old?
As far as the tickets assigned but not issued, a hundred twenty-six of them. But if this is an issue that comes up every year, um, considering the volume of tickets that go out, um, on an annual basis, I don't think a hundred twenty-six is extremely high. Um, I'm not sure how this report, um, capes the tickets, but the New Brunswick Municipal Court also deals with other agencies outside of New Brunswick, the Ruckers Police Department, the State Police, and other agencies that issue tickets within the city. So I don't know how many of them are delingating just towards the New Brunswick Police Department. Um, but as said, there's a large volume that was out there. Getting them recalled in the proper amount of time is an issue. We're working on it. They may get it a little better, but it's never gonna be perfect. Uh, we'll never be able to get every ticket back in the right amount of time. It's not that the tickets are lost, they're just, they haven't been returned to the court to be forwarded because they view them as outdated. Um, and as far as tickets issued but not assigned, I don't know what that means. Uh, the way I read it is that they were issued, but the court hasn't recorded them, so I don't know why the court has not recorded them on their report. But if they know they were issued, they must have some record that they're, they were issued. So why they're not on their, uh, recording process, I don't know.
Thank you for the thorough answer. I think it appears there still is a bit of a court issue. The court still needs to, um, rectify this, and the police still need to rectify this. And while the explanation might make sense for most of the tickets that are, uh, here, I found at least one that, uh, had a suspicious backstory that I've, uh, previously brought up to you and to Captain Miller. Uh, but, uh, that's all I have. Except I do wanna, uh, just close by bringing up this, uh, construction timeline. So you've allowed the, uh, A J D Construction Company to, um, build a building right here, uh, starting at eight A M. on Saturdays. Says that that's necessary to keep the New Brunswick Performing Arts Center project on schedule. Um, can you tell me, uh, is it already in danger of falling behind schedule?
No, I don't think that's the case. I just believe they are on a very aggressive timeline to get the, uh, get the construction going, and obviously, uh, demolition first. And that would require them to have to start the work on Saturdays, and, uh, obviously, uh, when they start to do that, it's a violation of laws, and so that's why they came through the.
Okay, and so is this, this is gonna be for the construction, not for the demolition, right?
No, our demolition, that's, that's the demolition contractor that's in there.
Oh, really, A J D?
Yeah.
Okay, I understand. So the demolition work will go on on Saturdays, but not Sundays?
Forever.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good one.
Judge, uh, yes, maybe the follow-up point. When I read the, uh, information from that municipal court audit, I was reading from a draft document. Um, I don't think it will have changed, but I just wanted to make everyone aware that it was a draft document.
Anybody else in the public on the resolutions? Seeing none?
So, second. Council Vice President Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar.
Yes.
Councilmember Socorro Ludwig.
Yes.
Council President Fleming.
Yes, I'm staying on seventeen.
So.
All right, now we have items for discussion by council. Anybody? Yes, I was gonna say, yes. I just wanna congratulate all the first responders, the police, firemen, everybody else that took part, and, and citizens, everybody else that took part in National Night Out. Um, it was just, every year, every year is a great event, and I wanna encourage more people to host community events, uh, put in for, you know, host community events, and then hopefully, leave and stop by those events. We don't control it right now. It's like, no, I don't care, but, but it was, it was big. And I think it's bigger every year, and we need more things like that in the community, um, because sometimes it doesn't get published in the papers and stuff like that. But it was indeed a, uh, very positive event. I've known, anybody else?
Very nice. Any recommend, maybe, just so people don't get the wrong idea, that we're coming to, uh, arrest some people, maybe a nice little magnet sign on a car or two, National Night Out or something, so they know why we're all over the place.
I just wanna say that I, I'd ready to, to New Brunswick, that the police department, um, received ten thousand dollar grant for community policing. They're gonna be buying, um, both banks for the kids, right, Captain? And also, um, to have a party in the holiday, in the, um, holiday Christmas party that the community holds for the kids, so, congratulations.
All right, now we'll open this up for a public discussion by council, I mean, public discussion. Uh, reminder that you have five minutes, and please come forward, state your name and address, according to record.
Hi, Danielle Moore, twenty-eight Rockwood Street. I would start off, I'd like to start off with, yes, what a wonderful, uh, National Night Out. And I will say, due to where the, the show how nice it was, I've got a chance to do it yet, but I will pass some pictures around to, throughout the people to show what a nice night it was. And wow, I get an A-plus on how the city has really upgraded the park, where I'm like, wow, something to do for everyone there, that, that they keep pulling the kids off the streets from doing. But yes, I will say what a wonderful night it was. And then also, regards to, with PlaySafe, once again, I can't say it but so many times, but yes, I will say to the mayor, to the city, the board of education, wow, it's been great, great. It's been upgraded. I've been to so many other different townships where, wow, they have nothing like New Brunswick. Wow, when they're sending our kids on trips, to it three times a week for the buses, and I will, I will say that. But, uh, one thing, uh, I would like to speak up about with PlaySafe, that was far as when I mentioned to you before at Baker Park, due to where I showed you the water, water fountain, where I said, wow, do, do any of you believe that this water is safe to drink? And, uh, if it's possible, anyone, uh, uh, can't say no one here from PlaySafe, but due to where, oh, to speak up, due to where I know PlaySafe didn't feel comfortable with drinking that water either, due to where I'm glad to see that they will provide bottled water at, at, at that. So, so I'm looking forward to, like, like I said, mentioning to the city, where, and to show now you have a water main break with this, uh, this water fountain, to show how, like I said, rusty and nasty it is, having a nice, uh, all the water, the water there, and starting to also smell bad. So like I said, I hope you look into, where I mentioned to you about two, two months ago, about replacing, uh, the water fountains for Baker Park and the park on Harvey Street. But like I said, I'm glad PlaySafe, they did, like I said, where they felt it's not safe to drink either, due to where they provided the kids with bottled water. But then it was another situation there, that was where PlaySafe was canceled from Baker Park. Not saying if it was dealing with the water or another situation. So, I, I'll hand the papers to you all, all at one, because, all at one time. That was about two and a half months ago. This is where Council President Fleming, you were not here. I spoke up about trees being cut in the neighborhood to make it safe for passing by, for walking, anyone riding a bike or anything. I asked that, okay, uh, the trees be taken care of. I did mention in every area, but I, uh, you know, I, I love to show my proof of when I know something's not, not in a good situation, to show you how low these trees are. This is my son. Now you know how, 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 my son is, right there. How these trees are so low, and that you can't even pass through, through these areas. So yes, please, I hope to see immediately, I, I will speak with what area now, Lee, Lee Avenue, how you would give tickets for people not controlling their bushes and hedges, but please, yes, look at all of these pictures to show, like I said, how low these trees are. That's my son. Like I said, wow, for the tree to be that low down to his head, so that wouldn't be possible for, for, for a grown, for a grown-up. So yes, I hope to see within a certain amount of time, due to where it's been two months, it's been pacing, but like I said, what, it's getting to be where you can't even pass through, through Lee Avenue and other streets over there.
Where is that? Cause I wasn't here. Uh, is that on somebody's property now, or is that?
No, this is the city. These are cities. I, I can, oh, you can have the pictures, but like I said, these are city trees. Like I said, here, if you can pass them. That's a water fountain. And then also, uh, due to where homeowner has been telling me about a situation with this, oh my goodness. Here we go again, huh? Getting wet over here, getting wet over here. Wow, something, I will get to that, huh? Being, being, being wet again for the second time. Uh, that's where a specific tree has been asked to be cut down for the past year or so. This is also on Lee, Lee Avenue, due to where, how this tree is so dead, where the branches, is the city gonna take responsibility of what these trees falling on people's car? So I hope to see that this tree, that's also on Lee, Lee Avenue, that's between, uh, Lawrence, by, close by Lawrence Street. So hope to see that the city takes action, like I said, to see them with their, with their trees.
Thank you.
And then another question I.
Please, now, five minutes, five minutes.
Okay, just one, one, one thing, that's just with, with Joyce Com, okay, Joyce Comer out here, due to where, okay, the situation, oh my goodness, what, what is? Yes, I'm getting tired of getting wet over here. Wow, wow. Uh, that's with Joyce Comer out here. That's why this comes from where the, sure, the city has spent over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, where you say that you don't deal with the flooding, you can't control flooding. The object of the project there was to stop with the sewers. I, if I will, next meeting, I will bring the pictures where when I do print them out, I didn't get a chance to make it home and print them out yet, but wow, it smells horrible. Joyce Comer, you have so much raw sewage. I have the pictures to show where, from, from the drain, the sewer drains, where you see it backing up from, from there. That was the whole idea during the project. So, okay, the sewers wouldn't interact with flooding, and then that goes down to the river. I meant it smells so horrible. So please tell me, what can you, what, what can you do, due to where you keep saying it has been done?
Charles Sanders killed her?
Yes, yes. And I meant it smells horrible.
My office is there, so I'm, you know, so they just look up here and say, Charlie, it's why I know that. And I mentioned it to, that is really, uh, so you have to.
And I said, I'm, I, I, you told me, sorry, you can't stop flooding, but my main thing, the, the, that's with the, the sewers, we're still interacting, with what, with the sewers, where you have sewers all around there.
The engineering department will look into that, uh, immediately. Here, of course, they designed, or participated in the, uh, work at that location. They will immediately investigate the source now. If there's a drip in the ceiling, I apologize.
Yes, 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 it is. I've had it wet three times already.
Okay, okay, I apologize. Might I suggest that we just move this away from that area, and then we'll get to.
So I hope, I hope the city is looking into it, even though it's been, what, three months now, since the vast situation that was over here.
We just had historic rain, and we're now feeling the effects of it right now.
Thank you.
Members of the council, council president, uh, my name is Junior O'Meara with the Environment Lab. You can see Organization Food and Water Watch. Uh, we launched, uh, this initiative called Off Fossil Fuels, uh, July first. It's been a month, month anniversary since, uh, we started this initiative. Basically, it started after the U.S. Conference of Mayors, uh, passed a nonpartisan bipartisan resolution uh, earlier this year, only a few months ago, supporting a hundred percent renewable energy uh, in their municipalities by twenty thirty-five. Uh, that's a very aspiration, aspirational goal. It's a very progressive goal. Probably one of the most progressive goals we've seen, uh, as far as the national agreement from, uh, from all of these mayors around the country. Uh, if you look at the first page of, uh, of this documentary I just provided to you all, uh, over a hundred, uh, elected officials have signed on to this pledge around the country in this last month. And, uh, I'd love, I'm glad to announce that one-third, thirty-three of them, uh, have, came from New Jersey. And the ones highlighted in yellow, uh, members from Escataway, Highland Park, um, Senator Vitale, who represents Moses County, Old Bridge Township, Spotswood, um, Senator Diamond, who represents also Moses County, uh, the council president, uh, from Prefanville. Uh, they've all signed on to, to this elected official's pledge, supporting this very progressive, um, initiative of one hundred percent renewable energy by twenty thirty-five. This isn't something we're asking, uh, whole entire councils, um, to pass unanimously. Of course, that would take more research, more legal discretion. Uh, this is something that elected officials, uh, on their own can, can support. Uh, basically, this will help us, uh, pressure elected officials, uh, on the federal level, on the senate level, and who knows, maybe even our president will take notice if he has, uh, elected officials in very competitive congressional districts or competitive states, seeing that they support renewable energy. Um, so I, I, again, I will stay until the end of the meeting if folks want to support this initiative, if folks have any questions, members of council, I mean, um, and, yeah, you will consider supporting this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening once again. Charles Cradell, New Brunswick, New Brunswick today. Uh, so just go back to square one. Do you support the impeachment of President Trump?
Can you, oh, give me, give me four reasons.
Four reasons?
Yes.
Uh, will you, will you pause, will you pause the clock while I give them?
No.
No, then I'm not gonna give you the reasons. Use the reason.
I mean, you're asking.
Come on, this is out there. He's, he's, he's the worst president by far in the history of the United States.
Okay, how would, how would he have a local body? Okay, stop right. How would it have a local body? What effect would that have to go up to the next level, to bond with his people?
You give a lot of lip service to defending freedom. In your, in the moment of silence at the, at the beginning of the meeting?
Yeah, please, sir.
You talk about defenders of freedom. What are you gonna do to defend freedom? We're gonna defend our country from the president. This is the most urgent situation that has come up in politics, in your time in politics. And you're sitting here saying, well, we're just a local body. What are we gonna do about it? I think you can do more. Call Congressman Pallone, ask him to sign onto the impeachment article that is already drafted, already introduced. That's all I have on that. Uh, and also, while you're at it, impeach the governor. Um, when's the Firehouse Museum gonna be done?
Firehouse Museum.
Um, I don't know, Director Walsh, which is the landlord of the project, that, that, I know the project is ongoing.
That's correct. Firehouse Museum project is ongoing, that is.
What year will it be finished?
It'll be finished when it's finished.
What's the holdup?
Is there a holdup? You said, uh, must have a holdup.
There isn't a holdup. We have some things that we're doing, we're building a new fire station, and we're making some adjustments as to what we want to do in the museum.
I don't see what the new fire station, which has not even broken ground yet, and I don't even know if they've acquired the land, I don't know what that has to do with the fire museum that, incidentally, two of the council members ran on a campaign of, we're going to, we're going to turn this into a community center and a museum. You delivered half. When is the other half going to be delivered?
You said, when is, Director Rolls, you said, when it's done, you said-
Somewhere.
It's going to be done when it's done.
It's an ongoing project, yes.
Perpetually ongoing, okay, I, I mean, I think that-
It's a construction project. We don't have a date when it's going to be done.
I live in the neighborhood, there's no construction going on there. There's nothing going on there. It's just sitting there.
You go inside?
No, can I go inside?
No.
Okay, it's closed to the public. You guys ran on campaigns, you were going to fix that and turn it into a museum? I'd like to go to the museum. I think it brings with the benefit of having a museum, especially when it focuses on something so important and honorable like fighting fires. No answer on what year it's going to happen?
So, how does it, do you answer?
All right, I mean, will you still be here and chair when it happens? Will Mayor Cahill still be the mayor?
You should ask him.
I'm sorry, I'm getting, I'm getting out of control here. I've got a lot of questions to ask. What, I have a call into Captain Miller, just wanted to work out with him, there's some arrests that I'm interested in learning more information about. Can you please ask Captain Miller to just tell me what types of documents he can provide in response to a request about an arrest? What types of documents can you provide regarding an arrest?
Which arrest?
A general arrest, what document, can you provide an arrest report, what types of-
Yeah, look up Executive Order 69, and it's all listed, therefore, I'm not going to repeat it for me, it's all there on here.
Okay, I'll check that out. I believe that the most recent request I made to the city clerk's office that Captain Miller helped with, I'd asked for the response to be in a, you know, like Excel spreadsheet if possible, or a comma separated value spreadsheet. And I said, please, you know, if possible, not a PDF file. I got a PDF file, and I asked Captain Miller why, why they weren't able to comply with my request, and if there's any way I could possibly be able to get spreadsheets in the future.
Captain Miller, is there a reason why you couldn't have the spreadsheet?
It was decided with the PDF file, and that's the way it's going to be continued to be sent to you. All the information is there, if you agree.
Can I just ask, what was the reason? Because I made, I made, I said, my preference would be to get it this way. Can I please get it this way? I asked politely, and went through the clerk's office, and they weren't able to comply. Just wanted to say if there's a reason for it. What's the reason?
The reason is, we're sending them out in PDF file, it's the most efficient for me to use, and like I said, the requirement is that you get the information, it's all there if you agree. And you're going to continue to get it in the meeting.
I have, I have a feeling if I'd asked for it in PDF, and please not in spreadsheet, I probably would have gotten PDF. So, next time I'll ask for the opposite. Can, when are the police going to get body cameras? Is, is somebody going to hear, take an action to make that happen? Or is, or is this like the Firehouse Museum?
We're in a research phase, there is no date more than a year.
Okay, I have a letter that I just want to share, which the members of the council should be enough for everybody. I'll share that with you. Captain Miller should be, should have a copy of the letter already. I'd like to hear if there's any response to this incident where somebody was pulled over and officers used inappropriate language and disrespected the neighborhood. And Schwartz Robinson, can I hear from Captain Miller about that?
Captain Miller?
I have no idea what letter he-
Have a chance to, but you don't, you won't want this to be out here.
Yeah, yeah, I, I believe it was sent to him, but I'll talk to him after the meeting about it then. I was under the impression, he had, I'd like you all to read the letter, because the allegations are, they cut to the heart of the problems with the New Brunswick Police Department, how, you know, the, we live in a segregated city, and there's discrimination, and the police should not be accorded that discrimination. So much to ask about, so little time. Can you tell me why you're going to give a tax exemption to the new project there at Hamilton and Easton?
No.
No?
It's on first reading.
Because it's on first reading. You won't tell us why you're going to give a lucrative tax exemption to out-of-state developer to build a nine-story building on Hamilton and Easton?
You have your time, you're welcome to. Thank you very much. I'll give you 15 seconds.
Why, why won't you tell? Why are you giving them a tax evasion? What's the, what's the basis for it? Are they, is there any public purpose to building? Are they providing affordable housing to anyone? Does the building include an affordable housing?
I believe in decency and order, and we're remaining consistent. You can call it what you want. You can get that answer in two weeks when we have our next meeting. If you want to use your last five seconds on that, you can continue.
Well, I will, I guess, just ask you to comment on the collaboration with ICE then, my last question. I brought it up before, and I didn't press you guys on it, but February 15th, Mr. Loughlin said, "The mayor believes his policy that RPD will not cooperate with ICE investigations and operations." He said, "The mayor has the power to enforce that." And then on March 1st, Councilman Escobar said, "I do not believe that the police should be assisting ICE." Yet, as you know, as has been discussed previously in June, exactly that, I believe Detective Victor Delgado was working with ICE agents, including that one that was wearing the mask in that cocaine bust on Redmond Street. I'd like to hear from the council, you guys put the public under the impression that the police would not be working with ICE? Apparently, they are. What do you have to say about it?
I don't believe they were working with ICE. I mean, if that's one, two key, is that one?
Yeah, can you ask Captain Miller if Sergeant Victor Delgado was there?
Captain Miller?
Yes, what's the question?
He asked a certain person.
Sergeant Victor Delgado, he was there. I have photographs.
There were several of the Bronx officers there. I was there myself.
Yeah, exactly. So, New Brunswick Police were cooperating with ICE?
They were, so far, you had kilos of cocaine, and which was in the neighborhood allegedly, I'm sorry. So, yeah, they did the right thing, that is.
That investigation had nothing to do with immigration status, it was purely a drug investigation. You know, per view that the Office of Homeland Security, which ICE is a part of, yeah, has pulled already to investigate cocaine. You know, there was eight kilos of cocaine that was eventually seized. It's a public safety hazard. I think the New Brunswick Police were cooperating with them, is no problem.
I read about it, I'm just trying to hold everybody accountable for their words, because, you know, if you can't be held accountable for your words, then there's not much else to go on. So, we were led to believe the police would not be coordinating with ICE for any investigation or operation.
You do say that, he's, the director is saying, you know, the police, he's saying that, you know, since there won't be, so that was not really clear.
It was made to seem like they'd be, you know, directing traffic, but this seems to be more of a collaboration. Okay, the same, thank you.
I'm not cutting the brush, I'm just joking. Don't disrespect anyone, but God put me in positions that I'm always prepared, so I'm going to put my rain jacket on so I don't get-
Just don't touch the microphone.
It's sad that I have to do this.
Did you get a cold sore?
Huh?
Did you get a cold sore?
Yeah, well, a little bit. I brought my rain jacket because I looked at the weather. And for some reason, it was meant for me to come here, because I'm going to get wet like that, you know, yeah. Hope, hopefully, a grant will come, also they can fix the sore. About the, you know, medical transportation in Sedan Street, corner from that area, I grew up on Seaman Street, right in the corner of the train tracks, that's my area. And I also drove medical transportation for two years. So, I understand the conditions of parking, going to counseling centers. I don't want to call them meth clinics, I prefer to call them counseling centers. But I understand the conditions of going to counseling centers. So, when you do park, there is, most people don't just drop them off. A lot of times, you have to wait, wait for the person. They'll come in, get their medication, and deal with the counseling, and then they will pull off, so. And that's how I got real close with, I'll take this off. I got real close with a lot of people who were suffering from heroin addiction and things of that nature. You know, it's pretty much like their therapist, nobody knew that. That's why when Captain Miller and former police director Joseph Catney jump out and, you know, pride themselves off of heroin busts, at that time, I was working in it, I kind of get offended because I'm dealing with the people, and, yeah, you brag about a bust, but you're not as adamant about the, the, what is it, the, not sports, but the treatment, the recovery. You know, just about the bust and the police, and we got this, and we get more funding because we're finding drugs, eight kilos and this, that. We clap, 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 but I dealt with the people that were suffering. You know, I dealt with people that were sick in the back of the car for two years. So, you know, I mean, God put me in certain positions. So, I think, you know, punishing them, you know, finding out, they're already dealing with a lot of other situations that you probably wouldn't even imagine. You know, and finding parking, any little, you might think, any little thing, you know, someone that's battling addiction, and they come out, and they're contemplating on getting high, and then a ticket might just make them just, you know what? It's not my day, I'm going to get high. You might just look at it as a ticket, maybe. You might just look at it as maybe something small. But we're talking about some people that are on the verge, they, they battling themselves every day. It's a fight to stay sober every day. So, a ticket might just be that, send them to the races to put a needle in the arm. This is what I know, I dealt with medical tra, I'm glad you mentioned that, I dealt with medical transportation for two years. You know, so, it's something to consider, but you already passed the, you're proof that you didn't even think that far, so it doesn't even make a difference.
Then, I'll stop the time.
Okay.
I know exactly what you're talking about. Like I said, you know, I lost my brother two years ago to addiction, to a overdose. This year, if you look at Star Ledger, NewJersey.com, two days ago, they did a story, because I said, it's always been an epidemic, you know, and, I think it's always been an epidemic, but it's only become, I made a comment one time, I said, it's only become epidemic, now that richer kids are dying from it. I lost three students this year, three students that graduated in the last three years. One of them just the other day, just the other day, they found him in his house. So, I have a certain connection and affinity, you know, for people like that. And it's, like I said, it's, it's, it's already, it's already really roughshod for our community, it's just like the AIDS epidemic. Nobody gave a damn about AIDS when gay people and people of color were dying. When it spread out beyond that, then people started doing that. You know, so, we do have to look at, you know, the whole macro system of what is now, what's going, it's always, like I said, it's always been going on. So, I do have a certain, you know, affinity towards that, but we can discuss that, man, you have a lot, you know.
Yeah, definitely. And like I said, you know, I knew Jahan growing up. You know, he's like a big brother to me, you know what I mean? And regardless of addiction, you know, I look, as a person, he was a good guy.
He was a good guy.
You know, I mean, I had a lot of respect for Jahan. As a little kid, I would see him, you know what I mean, going to the corner store, so, you know. But, yeah, we discussed that in another, awesome, you know, he did call me. And I want, hopefully, after, I'll even wait here after that, hopefully, we can send him to-
We'll send him there, all right.
We'll send him. Now, a question, I apologize because initially missed it, I had to jump soon at work. And so, when I was zipping, you know, when I heard my phone ring, I zipped down, I had it in my pocket, by the time I got to you, the phone call, it- But I called back, but I called back within a couple seconds, right?
But I want to use your time, but we're going to talk about this after.
No, 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 because I-
Don't worry about it. I don't think that worked.
No, you gotta understand, you gotta understand what I'm getting to.
Yeah, okay.
All right? It's always a sad, so listen, he complains about every time he calls me. Every single time he calls me, you call, you try me one time, and you got me. He complains every time, been complaining for the last year and a half about every time he calls me, and either, you know, I didn't pick up, he left a voicemail, I never get the voicemail. He said, ah, now he says, you know, it went straight to voicemail, so, so there's no proof that he ever called. You have proof that, when you call me, you got me. And now, that's, we got to put two and two together. He's lying. He don't call me. And the reason, the last time I asked him to call me was for a poor issue. That was police ticketing people, discrim, ticketing in a discriminatory manner. And you know what he elected to do? Not call me, and take that as a joke, and that's serious to me. And he elected to, you know, launch an investigation. So, now, you know, you call me, you get me. He calls me, he never gets me.
And he, Captain Miller?
Yes, I don't complain, I just state the facts. But at the last meeting, Mr. Pittman gave me his email address, I requested, because obviously, we're not able to connect on the phone. I emailed Mr. Pittman, I CC'd the council, they all saw that I emailed them. Did you receive the email, Mr. Pittman?
Sorry?
Well, I'm sorry, but the council saw that I did email you. If you'd like, you should-
Remind him.
I've been, I've been checking.
Check his spam box.
That was important, yeah, it was almost a terrible last season.
And being, he CC'd you, you are having, it's good that you are having my email also, you know. But ultimately, even though if he CC'd me, it doesn't matter. It'd been two years, but he'd been saying that he'd been reaching out to me to, 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 I guess, discuss that situation, which was discriminatory. So, you know, at the end of the day, this is how I see it, you know. You reached out to me, I think we can do some, I think we can do some things. At the end of the day, you know, the National Night Out, it was nice, you know what I mean? I even floated my son around, me and my son, we hung out all day, we just took through the brother, I was from the streets that I grew up on and hung out on and things of that nature. You know, unfortunately, we got to Joyce Comer Park, and I seen police harassing, but that's, that's nothing. But, you know, it was a good, it was a good event. And the $10,000 donation was a good event, I mean, that's a, that was a good contribution. Question is, where are those book bags planned to be distributed to? Because for some reason, I'll never see like book bags, maybe Palm Street on the Caden, maybe Front Street on the Caden. You know, maybe certain areas, but I will register that on Seaman Street.
So, you, all right, we're going to wrap this, because you don't need time.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no, we'll talk about, like, you know, we'll, yeah, we'll take into consideration, give us-
You take sure it's registered at the avenue, Seaman?
Give us, yeah.
Is that over here?
I'll do it. As much as we can, you know, so like, we'll make suggestions, you make, give your suggestions, then we'll put it out there and see what you're doing.
Sounds good.
All right. Anybody else in the public? See you none?
I don't think I can jump again.
Council Vice President Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Councilmember Sikora Ludwig, and Council President Fleming?
Yes.